Welcome to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission on November 21st, 2023. I call the meeting to order and will note that for the record that we have a quorum of members present. Before we get started, I'd like to remind everyone to silence their cell phones. And if you plan to speak this morning, if you'd sign back, speak during public comment, sign back in the corner so that you can reflect your address. So with that, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I'd now consider a motion to amend the consent agenda to remove from the bills the payment reflected to the law firm of Cheddar and Adams.
That would be my motion.
Second.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, so the next item is there, next item is the consent agenda. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on any item on the consent agenda? If you'd welcome to come forward.
Chet Ellsworth, Rapid City, Pennington County. Please bring your attention to the agenda item two today, which is the commission meeting minutes for November 7th, 23. Those minutes document two violations of SDCL 6117, the Conflict of Interest statute, and two violations of 125-2/3, the Executive Session Exemption statute for mission, commission minutes recorded and approved on November 7th for the conflict of interest event acknowledged at 11:38 a.m., October 24th, but not recorded in the minutes until November 7th. This event followed the October 3rd banning from public view of the two Paloma election lawsuit transcripts pending against Minnehaha, Pennington County, and Lincoln County since February 2022. That was done by Attorney Hyb, Marso, DeBert, Meter, Goldman, and others against Paloma, Meyer, and We the People. This event also followed the November 6th discovery that the court register of actions entries for the May 11th Paloma hearing were shadow banned. One day after the November 7th meeting, the state bar acknowledged the license retirement of the Paloma attorney just before the May 11th election litigation hearing. On this date, today, the commission has failed to continually disclose the Paloma election litigation to bondholders as required. On this date, the commission has denied the public an agenda presentation on the election integrity. On this date being six days after Biden met with Chi and four days after Biden invoked the War Powers Act, the commission has not accepted its culpability for the death of 16 million people worldwide from COVID. You by your Sharia conduct have formed with the state bar a terrorist cell to cover COVID culpability and election interference. Thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else who'd like to speak on the consent, any item on the consent agenda? All right, are there any other proposed amendments to the consent agenda?
I'd move approval of the consent agenda.
Yep, we are. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Kiple.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Blyenberg.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, thank you. All right, that takes us to regular business. First item is item seven, which is to consider a motion to approve a solid waste permit number 23-02 for the purpose of a rubble site on the property described as the northwest half, northwest corner of section 34 Township 101 North dash right, 51 West, sorry, I totally butchered that.
That's all right. Good morning Commissioners Mason, Stefan from the county planning office. So yes, Mueller Pallets has submitted an application for a solid waste permit for their tree grinding operation on the property legally described, that was explained by the chair.
Kind of.
The site for the tree grinding operation is located approximately a half mile east of the 267th Street and 463rd Avenue intersection, and the site plan and submitted documents indicate that the tree grinding operation will use approximately the east 450 feet of that 79 acre property. The Minnehaha County Solid Waste Ordinance defines tree branches and other similar materials as rubble and defines a rubble site as a site where rubble is deposited. Therefore, based on this definition, this type of operation does require a solid waste permit based on the definitions set forth in the Minnehaha County Solid Waste Ordinance. In addition, the county commission did approve a conditional use permit application for the tree grinding operation at this site, and one of the conditions of approval was that the petitioner receive a solid waste permit from the county commission. Planning staff has been in contact with the State Department of Ag and Natural Resources in regards to this item several times, and the state has explained that they do not require a state solid waste permit or other licensing for this type of solid waste facility due to the fact that the petitioner is only allowed to accept clean, untreated, unpainted, and unstained wood. With that, staff is recommending approval of solid waste permit 2302 with the proposed conditions, and action is needed to either approve or deny solid waste permit 23-02 for Mueller Pallets tree grinding operation. And I will just go to the application materials here. Let's see if I can find the site plan quickly so we can. So these are just some site photos that were submitted by the petitioner, so here's looking to the west, this tree belt is on the eastern portion of the site. And then here's looking back towards the east, and this is the driveway into the property. Here's an aerial overhead of the property. I'm sure we're all familiar with the property with several meetings on it, but just bringing it to your attention of exactly where it is, but I am available for any questions if you have them.
Any questions for Mason? All right, is there anyone here for public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll turn it over to the commission for discussion or a motion.
I would make a motion to approve, second.
Motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Blyenberg.
Aye.
Kiple.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, thank you. All right, that takes us to item eight, which is to consider a motion to declare sheriff's office vehicles as surplus and authorize disposal as outlined. Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners, Joe Bosman, Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. This morning I have in front of you a few, three, it's actually three commission items that I'll have you consider for motions. What it is, is we've finished our new vehicles that have come in, and as such, we find vehicles that are not worthy enough to be still on patrol, so we reach out to other county departments to see if maybe there still could be some additional life left in these vehicles within the county, or if they need to go to surplus for auction. As a result, we have three different breakdowns exhibits that show that we have some vehicles that have found a new home with other county departments. Some vehicles will be going to online auction through Purple Wave, and a couple of the vehicles had received damage sustaining totaling amount throughout this last fall, and so we have insurance proceeds to accept as salvage for those vehicles. If it's okay with you guys, I would appreciate if we could break it down into three different motions as we go through each exhibit.
All right, so why don't we take the first one, which is Exhibit A, the vehicles for surplus for transfer at no cost to county departments? Any questions for? Oh, good question, good idea, public comment? Any public comment on that particular one? Thank you for the reminder. So are there any questions by the commission?
Move to approve the transfer of the three vehicles to the departments as listed. Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kiple.
Aye.
Blyenberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. It takes us to Exhibit B, the vehicles that they're proposed for surplus for sale at public auction on December 19th, 2023. Any, any public comment on that item? Any questions by the commission? Commissioner Karski.
I see a 2020 Ford Explorer being surplus and another one down below being salvaged. What's the matter with that 2020 Ford Explorer, do you know?
Well, the one that's being salvaged was totaled out in a collision, so that one is beyond repairs.
That makes sense.
But the one that's for auction, that one has like 130, 40,000 miles, and there's some transmission issues and other mechanical parts with it that, at this point in its life, it's not functional for us to put the money into it to get that thing going.
Actually, we gave highway department an O9 in Polis, so I thought maybe they could work on it, but obviously it's beyond that.
It is, it would be probably more than what it is worth, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve Exhibit B as surplus for sale at a public auction and authorize the auditor to publish the notice.
Second. Motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Blyenberg.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Kiple.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. It takes us to item C, which is declare that vehicles on Exhibit C as surplus for salvage and accept insurance payment of $42,283. Any public comment? Any questions? I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the Exhibit C as surplus for salvage and accept the insurance payment.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Blyenberg.
Aye.
Kiple.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, thank you. All right, we now have several presentations from different entities that the county supports. First one starts off is the Sioux Empire Fair Association presentation. Good morning Scott.
Good morning. Thank you for taking the time to let us present Scott Wick with the WH Lion Fairgrounds. Looking at that list Joe had up there, those auction vehicles would be the stars of the fleet for us, so I might have to give them a call. So anyway, yes, we have the 85th, or 84th annual, be the 85th next year, and no secret, we had some challenges and some weather, but as we get through the presentation, you'll see that we did, we did very well overall. Just go and click through. Oh, scroll. All right, starting off with, we couldn't do it without our day sponsors. Everybody on here, aside from CMB and Circle K, has been with us since about 2011. We just brought CMB on this year as a new partner, and they had a nice display during the whole fair and had a lot of traffic, and I actually think they sold some mowers and some other equipment while they were there. And then we brought on Circle K as another partner, as another partner, and on their day, they had 40 of their staff that were out there volunteering at the gates and welcoming people as they came to the fair, so that was, that was very nice to have them out there in that capacity. Special events that we had booked, and Billion Automotive has been a great partner for the main stage, Brothers Osborne concert Saturday, unfortunately, we lost the entire Saturday of the fair, and we had to cancel that concert. The Code News Live was out there broadcasting live Monday through Friday at 4:00 p.m. Unfortunately, a lot of that was always talking about the weather, but that happens. The Whiskey Myers concert, they, they've got one song in, and then we had to cancel that one as well. And on both our cancellation of concerts, we had to cancel the entire property and shut down the carnival as well. We had three out of the four RV3 Vanguard squadrons that are powered by ethanol, those planes were there, did a flyover on Friday because that was the South Dakota Corn Utilization Day. We got a little tricky on Monday and had a mullet contest, we had 13 contestants, it was, it was very entertaining, and I think it's going to take off, and we're going to do more things on Monday on the front porch. Bill Zortman was out for Ag Appreciation Day and interviewed our governor, Lieutenant Governor, and also Mayor Tenhaken. Livestock numbers were still very respectable, as you can see up there, overwhelming response to the new building that they got to show under. It's large enough to where there's always some shade that's in there, and when we brought the 4H and FFA folks in there, we just told them, set it up the way you want to and run your shows, the open class shows were in there as well, and lots of very positive comments about that building that was, that was completed before the fair. It's the second year we've had Thana as our superintendent. She just dives right into it, very passionate about it, done a very good job of getting added partners and sponsors and coming up with new, new games, new gimmicks. We're constantly looking for showcases and, and things like that, and display cases that we can put in the north room of the expo to improve the experience in there, because a lot of the things that we use right now are getting very dated. Commercial and food vendors, every year, the expo, the expo is a challenge, ever since the, the main, the new main entrance was, where it's at, right off of the asphalt parking lot, people come in and they just take a hard right and head right to the carnival, all the food vendors. So we've had, we've had new vendors that have been in the expo, we do get a few that return, but it's a challenge, it's not just a challenge at our fair. The commercial side of the fair industry is a challenge nationwide. We just came back from Rocky Mountain Association of Fairs and Heartland Association, and it's, it's always a topic of how do we get people in there? How do we get the guests to go to those areas? And it's, it's a big challenge, and we, we haven't, we haven't cracked that one yet. But we did have vendors in the commercial buildings far away from Ohio and Nevada. Food vendors still very, very strong. A little bit of ownership changes, some, a couple of sons have taken over from their, from their family and their fathers, but we've had, we had 159 different foods, and we had, had vendors as far away as Florida, New York, Georgia, Arizona, and Texas, and a lot of those guys have been with us for, for many, many years. Biggest fairground improvement was the new covered livestock show arena, and those are all the pictures that are here. We did have a donated stone with all of the folks that donated money and the anonymous donor. We also had the east parking lot, I believe Stephen Mark worked together on that, and that was resealed and then overlaid before the fair and striped. And then also with our partnership with the city, the north side of the armory was very broke up for asphalt, so that was all milled out, and then they came and put a four inch lift in there and did that last spring. Involved with the community, I've had Faith Temple Food giveaway for well, probably 15 years now. This year we hosted the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office sobriety training, so they used my office five different times for a whole day and went through their program there on that. We host Turkey and Ham giveaways over the holidays, Sioux Falls Cares will have their big event this December, the November Run for Food, and then the Sheriff's Office and South Dakota Highway Patrol do canine training out there as well. So looking at the financials, these don't, these don't move around a whole lot, you know, the grandstand is, is the bane big expense, grounds always stays about the same right there. With our cancellations, stagehands were cheaper because we didn't use as many hours canceling two shows. So that's the expenses for the, for entertainment. Overall expenses, adding in the entertainment and everything else, we did up the advertising and marketing a little bit because we did have two ticketed shows, and we were getting good responses on those until the weather had other ideas. So we had total expenses just shy of $1,665,000. Revenue, the days that were bad were, were a total loss. So we started out Saturday, really we lost the whole first Saturday. Sunday, we had the Headliners truck breakdown in Minneapolis, so they were supposed to load it at 10 o'clock, they didn't load it until 4:30, so we had to cancel the opener for Sunday. Monday, we didn't have an event in the grandstand. Tuesday, we were supposed to have three acts, Sammy Kershaw canceled, so then we just had Aaron Tippin and Colin Ray, who did extra long sets, did a very nice job. And then the concert on Wednesday was Cooper Allen and Eli Young, which was very well attended, great show. And then Thursday, we got the opener in, one song from Whiskey Myers, and we had it shut down, canceled the entire property again. So again, with our challenges, the days that were bad were bad, but the days that were good were very, very good. People came out and supported, carnival did well, and people were there to take, take advantage of the days that they could. So as you can see there, one of the big, big inputs is the insurance proceed. We had, I had canceled, had, had insured for cancellation on gross revenue, so it took 10 weeks to get through the process, but we did receive insurance proceeds. So you'll see that brought us back up to a net profit of a little over $274,000. That, on average, that's the, the fourth best in the last 13 years. So while a lot of people don't like to pay insurance premiums, it's something that's going to, that's in the budget for us every year, especially when we're outside. With the weather, we've had other rain cancellations, things that have happened, people, people wait till the last minute, they'll sit at home, they'll watch the news where day of show walkups used to be about 15% of the sales, now they're closer to 40 or 45. And if it's marginal, things change quite, quite rapidly. So with that, thank you for all your support. Would entertain any questions, just a few photos here, the, there's the Vanguard's that were flying over, they did a what they call a flat show over the grandstand that Friday, they usually have four planes, but one of their pilots is also a pilot for fighting fires, he got called out west. Of course, we always have the tractor pull, kid here is pretty serious about, about pulling for a metal, and down here, we brought in a, the foam zone, so a gentleman would, would fire that up about three times a day for half an hour, kids had a great time. With our wins, we did learn we will have to probably move it farther away from the petting zoo because it did spook a few of the animals that were there, but, or we may buy our own, because you can buy the machine, and the rest is just bike rack and a tent, hire a college kid and run that thing, so we might, might try that as well. And of course, we'd like to thank everybody and do our advertising on some billboards, and the rodeo was a big success. We are going to add, Friday night will not be a motorsports event anymore, we're going to add either a Bull Bash or Bulls in Bronx because the rodeo events are so well supported. And then we are going back to a free gate until 1:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. After two years of having it as a paid gate with only Wednesday free, and analyzing those numbers and looking at that, that's just something that we need to do because we saw a drastic drop in, in folks coming through till 1:00. And it'll, it'll help hopefully with the commercial building, hopefully, definitely with the food vendors, and if they're out there and they don't pay to come in and they see something they like, hopefully they come back later that evening or catch a show or want to go see a livestock show or the barrel race or something like that. Overall, very good, very stressful week, however, being insured was a thing to do, so we, we ended well. So if anybody has any questions?
I'm going to ask the public first, is there anybody for public comment on this item? All right, I'll turn it over to the commissions. Any questions for Scott, comments?
I would make a comment that having the fourth best Sioux Empire Fair gross net profit and the conditions that you had to fight through were frankly a surprise to most of us, I'm guessing, so thank you for your work and for the volunteers that make that fair possible.
It was, like I said, very stressful, but it was, it's an investment with that type of insurance, it's, it's different than just the rain insurance, but without that, it would have obviously been much different, but it's, it was a thing to do, so thank you for your comments.
I keep waiting for Commissioner Karski to say that he always believes that insurance premiums are well spent, but they clearly were here.
I was going to ask, but I. I, I, I'm going to agree with him because, you know what, it sure is great when it's there and you have that coverage, it's just something that's necessary, especially in our business, being outside with the threats of the weather. We've seen beautiful days, no cloud in the sky, and 45 minutes later, I'm getting a call from Weather Service, or Adam from the Sheriff's Department is, and all of a sudden, you have things you have to talk about. I couldn't imagine the number of phone calls Adam had, and another positive is that our, our activation plans and evacuation plans and everything worked very well, the communication worked very well, so I don't want to have to, I don't want to have to use those every year, but out of nine days, you're going to get some sort of weather every year.
It is South Dakota.
It is South Dakota.
Yeah. Well, thank you, we do really much appreciate you taking the time to be here this morning and the hard work you do all year long on the fair.
And we just, on behalf of the staff and the board, thank you for all your support and everything US Commissioners do to support us as well, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so that takes us to item 10, which is a presentation by the Minnehaha County 4H.
Good morning, Nathan Scatson, Minnehaha County 4H Office. Today, myself and my coworker Aubrey are going to just give a brief overview and update of the 4H program in Minnehaha County. So just like to start every presentation with a reminder about what is 4H, it's a youth development program with the cooperative extension system of land grant universities, so we are housed at South Dakota's Land Grant University, SDSU, Go Jax, I don't know, I didn't go to school there, so I just, Go Jax. Anyway, and the 4H program is structured by federal, state, and county support, and the vision of the South Dakota 4H program is through experiential learning and mentoring relationships, South Dakota 4H prepares youth to lead lives of possibility amidst the grand challenges of our times. So I'm just going to go into some of the numbers, and then Aubrey will share some of the fun stories, but these are our numbers of participation this last year. Mastery, we define as 4H youth who have mastered an area or the overall program. So usually, those are our youth that are graduating out of the 4H program. We had a number of youth this year who, we had four livestock youth who graduated, and oh, I'm going to blink on how long they've been doing this, but all four of them have been showing since they were like eight years old, so almost 10, 11 years. And so it was really fun to see them all show one last time, we got a photo of them together and everything. We have a couple of youth who mastered shooting sports, so they were selected to go to a national shooting sports competition, and then we had one youth who completed the fine arts mastery program, which this year entailed her making a collection of five visual art, fine art pieces, and then she displayed those in a pop-up art show during Wednesday of the Sioux Empire Fair, and was available to talk to the public about her pieces, and then also was judged during that time. So that's what that mastery member means. The rest of them are pretty self-explanatory enrolled, that means they signed up in 4H, our official 4H members outreach, those are numbers where we are going out into the community and teaching. Total membership is the combination of those two, and then we like to look at it as a percentage of youth served. So this year, the numbers all have gone up from the previous year, and then with the addition of Aubrey, we should expect the numbers for this next year to increase even more. And just to clarify too, the way the 4H program runs, our 4H year is from October to September. So this is from, these are the numbers from October 2022 to September 2023. So with that, we'll turn it over to Aubrey, and she'll talk about some of our highlights from this past year.
Yes, thank you again, I'm Aubrey Anderson. So some of our highlights, we're always excited about our partnership with McCrossan Boys Ranch, they have a number of youth there that are enrolled members, as well as two staff members who are enrolled volunteers with us. And this year, at our recognition event, our leaders chose to honor them as a Business Partner of the Year, as well as Volunteers of the Year. They have done a fantastic job partnering with us as a whole 4H program, and even offering their facilities to host different horse events throughout the year, which is really awesome for those kids to be able to interact in those ways. So being able to honor them for that was a really good thing, and then two of their volunteers we were able to honor as our Volunteers of the Year. One of my favorite parts of 4H as a former 4H'er is the focus on community service and really caring about and investing in our communities. And so a few things happened this year where I feel like our youth are very much taking that call and that vision on themselves. We had one club, the Hearts and Service Club, which is a smaller club, maybe five to seven kids, but they raise money, raise funds on their own, and help package 8,205 meals for. raise money, raise funds on their own and help package 8,205 meals for Kids Against Hunger. And that was a youth-led initiative, which is just really awesome. You think of middle and high schoolers taking on that vision. Um, and then we have our junior leaders, which are made up of middle school and high school students um, across our county 4H program come together to do some additional county level leadership in our program. They, um, participated with a state 4H initiative to make and donate dog toys for humane societies. And then this last weekend, they also chose, they wanted to do some sort of community outreach in November and chose to work with St. Francis House and volunteered at their event. At our last junior leaders meeting, I was struggling to keep up with the amount of community service ideas that they have. So I'm excited to see where they take that this coming year, um, and just enabling them and empowering them to make a difference in their, um, communities. Um, as far as what we're looking forward to in this coming 4H year, um, Nathan has done a great job over the last eight years, um, working with Boys and Girls Clubs. So that is a continued outreach partnership, working in a lot of the after-school sites. Um, we also have some new outreach partners that we're starting to work with serving youth grades K through 12. So, uh, two different private schools, a homeschool co-op. And then working with some more of the Sioux Falls School District after-school programs to see, um, how we can connect and partner and support their goals as well. Uh, we've also started, um, a new program pilot, which is focused on the dairy industry called Adopt a Cow. So that is a new curriculum being developed by SDSU and 4H. And so I'm piloting that in one classroom right now. And hopefully we will get more, um, classes, classrooms engaged in that as time goes on. And then we're also, uh, focused on kind of revitalizing our junior leaders program. Like I mentioned, they're very excited about community service. Just engaging those youth in a little bit higher level of leadership, um, with their community, with the clubs, different things that they can really go forth and, um, make a difference in their communities, but also their own lives. That is what we have for you today. We are available for any questions.
Thank you for coming. I appreciate it. Questions, comments? Commissioner Karski?
Nathan and Aubrey, thank you for the presentation. Are you advisors to any other county programs or is it just Minnehaha County?
Minnehaha County.
Okay. I was just curious on the involvement rate, the engagement at 8%. Is that pretty typical? Is that high, low?
It really depends on the county. Um, you know, and last year, if you look at our numbers last year, as far as the percentage of youth reached, we reached 10% of youth, but the amount of youth in Minnehaha County, the estimate increased faster than the amount of youth we served this year. So now we're down to eight. But it's, you know, some counties where there's only a couple hundred kids, they get close to 100% engagement. Um, with Minnehaha, I think 10 is, should be our base if there's at least two of us. Um, and so this next year is gonna be the first year again where there's two, um, staff members, but we could, we could push for more and that's kind of our goal as an office is to push for more engagement.
Okay. Appreciate it. And just one more, not a question, more of a comment. The junior leaders program, I think that's a a great idea and I'd encourage you to probably consider expanding it to, you know, kind of a study in civics and maybe looking at the elected officials, commissioners, city councilors, each of the small communities, how involvement could be there. So I think that's a good program. Just encourage you to expand it.
Yes, absolutely. And I will say two of them have taken a step towards some of that civic involvement. Um, and they actually serve as 4H state ambassadors. And so they do engage with a little bit more of that civicacy. Engagement through the state, but yes, that is something we look forward to.
Cool.
Other questions, Commissioner Feinberg?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Um, you guys have been up to a lot this year and I'm excited to see where things and numbers will change next year. Um, I was just curious, how long have we been tracking the mastery member?
I believe this is our second or third year of doing that. So that was not, um, about three, it's hard to remember with the COVID year. I think 2020 was kind of the year that we were changing how we track some numbers. And so this is, I believe, the third year we've done the mastery. Um, and what we are slowly adding to our county program too is more, uh, opportunities for kids to master or graduate out of the static exhibit, um, areas. So if a kid has been doing photography for seven years and is getting purples every year, um, we're gonna give them an opportunity to kind of graduate, be done, master that area by presenting a portfolio of their photography and having it judged a little more critically, more in-depth. Um, and so that number should expand as we go on each year.
I really liked what I had read about that, about how you're working on building more depth, um, in those situations. And then just one more question, um, how did the dog show go?
Oh, yeah.
You can talk about that.
Yeah. So, uh, we hosted a regional dog show. We co-hosted it with Lincoln County down in Lenox. Um, and it went very well. And we had, I believe we had 24, 24 exhibitors. Um, so 4H youth come from kind of all over the eastern part of the state. And I think that's an area of growth that we're gonna keep seeing, um, because the dog project with 4H is a good hidden secret. It's, I'll advertise it right now. It's free. Uh, because our 4H program is free, um, and it's dog obedience, dog showmanship. Um, and then dog agility. Um, after you've been in the program for a year, you can start running the agility course with your dog too. So yeah, so the regional show went very well and the plan is that we will continue to host that, uh, going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Kipley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate your outreach in the community. Uh, in particular, you highlighted the Boys and Girls Club. I know they, as well as I think it's VOA, um, MB, uh, the after-school, uh, aspect of this with the Sioux Falls School District. Um, I, I take it, uh, are, are you reaching out to some of those other entities as well and, and just kind of the after-school programming across Sioux Falls School District?
Yeah, um, I actually met with, uh, some of the, I believe they're called enrichment coordinators, um, with the Sioux Falls School District this last week. Um, so the elementary and then high school, and they said they were hiring a middle school person as well. But those, the people in those roles at the school district are to bring in basically outside providers. And so I was able to meet with them to discuss what we can offer. And the elementary schools are the only ones that are kind of really set up for that right now. They're hoping to expand into middle school and high school kind of next year. Um, and they are going to help us coordinate that with all of the providers and all of the Sioux Falls Elementary School sites.
Yes, and I think you're on the right track with, uh, Boys and Girls Club seems to be a big partner for Sioux Falls School District at the middle school level with McGovern Middle School having an addition. Uh, so I think you're, you're finding some of the right community partners to make a big impact. Uh, my only question would be, what's the proportion of your efforts as it matches with, uh, your enrollment that's kind of in Sioux Falls and then the more rural areas of the county? And how do you balance, you can only be in one place at a time. It doesn't seem like you have a hu- huge staff resources, but how do you balance that getting out to the rural areas and, and what level of interest are you seeing in the rural areas for this type of service versus some kids in Sioux Falls schools?
Yes. Um, so it is not a unique situation to the country, but it is pretty unique to South Dakota to have Minnehaha County where we have such a large urban population and such a large rural population. We try to prioritize both equally, but we really have two modes of serving each of those populations. Our rural population, that's where we have more of our traditional 4H because it is very easy so far um, to go to Colton. Colton has a 4H club, the Colton Hustlers. They have been a 4H club for years and years and years. And they are a definition of what a community club is in 4H where if you are a kid in Colton, you are related to or know someone who is a member of the Colton Hustlers 4H club. So then it is easy for you to be brought into that community club and get the benefits of 4H. In Sioux Falls, we have found that it is easier to go to where the youth are as opposed to trying to bring them to us. And so that's where our partnerships with the Sioux Falls after-school programs, the Sioux Falls in-school programs have allowed us to reach those youth, um, and not have to try to recruit volunteers, start a community club. National 4H doesn't necessarily see the difference or like worry about a difference between a youth that's being reached by 4H through a community club enrollment and a youth that's being reached by 4H through an after-school program. Um, our directive is to try to bring educational opportunities and learning to all the youth of Minnehaha County. And so we do that through partnerships with volunteers, through partnerships with after-school, through enrollment, through fairs, um, through camps, through just as many kind of different avenues as we can. Um, the nice thing about working with schools and after-schools too, is that there is a season, uh, for school and it usually is opposite our busy season with fairs and camps. And so that kind of breaks the year up for us nicely too, where this time of year, we're able to focus on schools after schools. The summer, we're able to focus on our traditional enrolled 4H, getting kids ready for the Sioux Empire Fair and then the state fair.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Anybody from the public? Public comment on this item? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That takes us to item 11, which is a presentation by the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance. Good morning.
Hi.
Hi. Well, good morning, Commissioners. Tyler Torson, President and CEO of Sioux Metro Growth Alliance. Uh, and then with me, I got my board chairman, Jay Buckholz too. We appreciate the opportunity to uh, come before you and first and foremost, thank you for your continued support of our alliance, but also, um, to share a little bit of what we're doing. I'd ask for a little bit of grace. I'm about one month in, in this new role, uh, but doing really, really good so far. So I'll go ahead and jump into it. Uh, so a little bit of background of kind of what is the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance? What do we do? Our mission is pretty simple and that is that we empower our communities to grow. Uh, and so given a little bit of a current state of play, um, our current memberships include four counties, Lincoln, uh, Minnehaha, McCook and Turner. And then in addition, within those counties, which is the Sioux Falls, uh, MSA, uh, we got 16, uh, member communities currently, which are listed up there. Um, sharing a little bit of background and history lesson for folks, maybe tuning in or for you guys too, which I'm sure you're already aware. You know, Sioux Metro Growth Alliance, our roots and our origin kind of go back to Makita in 1991, the Minnehaha County Economic Development Association. In 1996, Lincoln County looked at you guys and said that that's a good idea. We should do something similar. And so then 96, we had the Lincoln County Economic Development Association. Uh, for the longest time, that was two separate associations, kind of similar purpose, kind of led under, under one person. In about 2021, we kind of did a strategic realignment and merged those entities into the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance that you see today. Uh, so kind of keeping on the theme of, of rural and urban and, uh, promoting growth, uh, for our communities and for the whole region in this corner of the state, that's where we can really come in and be a, a partner in that. So kind of what, what we do, again, we can break it down into two areas and I'll kind of elaborate a little bit more than happy to take any questions later. Uh, you know, growth and engagement. So on the growth side, helping our communities grow their tax base. Um, helping them grow their population when they want to grow, helping with workforce challenges, some of those quality of life amenities and just making sure that this continues to be kind of the best place to live, work and raise a family, uh, in the Sioux Metro. And then on the engagement side too, um, our kind of association and what we can do with our various partners is to help those communities, meet them where they are, help them with different, um, strategic planning initiatives, marketing efforts, storytelling, uh, community development and, and much more. So a little bit deeper dive on the growth side, again, that, that sometimes that looks like, uh, you know, we work with federal, state, local partners too. Um, so like the South Dakota Governor's Office Economic Development, uh, sometimes they'll send out RFIs, request for information. Uh, we have, uh, currently we're a staff of four. Now we're going through times of transition, but with our, our staff of four too, we can, we can help different communities with their different resources to answer and respond to those RFIs and, and having a sense of what sites may be available for development. Um, and both being kind of a conductor, if you will, sharing information to prospects, uh, but then also to communities as different projects are looking for, uh, whether it's to move their headquarters here or to expand a business or whatever it may be. Um, even on a local, local level, working with like the Sioux Falls Development Foundation and other entities like that. Again, we're trying to be a, a connector and a, a resource partner for everybody. So again, on the engagement side, uh, we do have, uh, it's kind of a newer model in the last couple of years. We have four communities currently or five communities currently that are enhanced, communities we call it, uh, which is a little bit more of direct support, kind of hands-on helping with economic development activities, uh, within those communities. Um, as we continue to grow the organization and look at ways that we can be helpful, and again, meeting communities where they are. Um, sometimes, uh, you know, that might be helping with a, a board retreat. Maybe that's, uh, strategic planning stuff. Maybe that's going after a grant. Uh, whatever it may be, we can help, again, pair resources or help, um, help them, uh, take that next step. Uh, storytelling is another big aspect. We also have a lot of marketing partnerships, um, in different ways with our audience, with our brand, with our different channels. Uh, we do electronic newsletters. We have distribution lists. We do, we can help with press releases. We can help, um, a lot of these member communities and counties and um, with those memberships too, with those communities, I should mention, uh, if they have a chamber of commerce, if they have a economic development corporation or a board, um, they kind of automatically get partnership, membership status with us. Um, in addition, we also have corporate partners, um, that are again, just people that care about growth. So utility partners, developers, financial institutions, things like that. Some of our engagement activities that we do too, again, part of our, our value add to our members is, uh, we do like monthly mayor's roundtables with our 16 mayors, 17, because we also invite, um, Sioux Falls mayor as well to be part of that conversation. Uh, with our, our metro mayors, they love that. It's a good opportunity for them to be a sounding board with each other. Uh, we also have economic development roundtables. We do our membership advisory board, which has all of our different stakeholders together to, uh, to again, share updates both ways. Uh, we also have our annual growth summit, uh, which is really topic specific. So our last one was held in September. That one was a, a deep dive, two-day conference on housing. And so we'll have that again next year, um, on a different subject. We also do our annual bus tours that maybe some of you have participated in. Uh, we do that in Lincoln and Minnehaha Counties and so taking people around and showcasing more of the county as well. Um, we do a golf outing in the spring and then our annual meeting, um, in the spring as well. So, you know, there are certainly some, some challenges that come with growth. You guys are no strangers to that. Uh, you know, uh, looking at different sites and different needs in the community, what infrastructure is there, what infrastructure needs to be there, um, that kind of thing. We can help be kind of the, the partner that can bring different puzzle books, excuse me, different puzzle pieces together, um, to help solve some challenges too. And so that's really kind of where we're, we're trying to be another tool in the toolbox for our counties, our cities, our members and anybody else that wants to be a partner. So some of our goals, uh, again, I'm pretty fresh into this role too, but, uh, building off of the, the longevity, the 31, 32 years of the organization, kind of going back. Um, just getting back out and doing some of our outreach tours. I was in, um, Centerville last night. We were in Crooks last week. We were in Colton. I think that was last week, maybe the week before. It's all kind of blurred together. Uh, but we're really hitting the road and, and checking in with our communities, getting to know them better and see uh, where are they at, what are their needs are, where can we be helpful? So doing a lot of that, continuing to raise funds through, um, just continued investments from our members, but then also our corporate partners too, that again, care about growth. So we can continue our, um, outreach activities and then our engaging activities, which is really where we get all the minds together. Um, and then just again, seeing what we can do to, to be helpful and build out more industrial and residential capacity too. Um, again, partnering with all the different resources like Sioux Falls Development Foundation, GOED, other folks that looking at um, what different sites may be available in the metro area to continue our, our growth. Uh, that's about all I have. I wanted to keep it short and sweet and be respectful of your guys' time. Um, anything that I'm missing? Okay. Happy to answer any questions, but again, just thank you so much for your guys' continued, uh, support of the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance.
Thank you. Questions for Tyler? Commissioner Karski?
No, not really. Well, I guess a question. Um, last week I was at the meeting in Colton, a good meeting. Um, member advisory board meeting. Not to put you on the spot, Tyler, like you said, you have only been there about a month, but how many? I mean, that's a, that's a pretty good sized meeting. How many people are on the membership advisory board? I know you got the mayors of the small towns and et cetera. You want to talk about the comp, what compromises that?
Our membership advisory board is about, is about 30, uh, members currently. And so that's a little bit of our larger group too. Again, it's, it's a combination of mayors or their district. Again, it's, it's a combination of mayors that are designees, some of our kind of partnership people. And then, you know, like the one last week, we invited our congressional delegation. We invited Bob Mont to come and give a presentation. So trying to have a, a topic focused person and get all the different focus, or different people in the room to think about growth and think about as a region, kind of that regional approach.
So I just, for the commission, wanted to be noted that that's my liaison report for the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance, where I was last week. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thanks for being here Tyler. And got big shoes to fill with our friend Jesse Fonkert. He was a good tour guide on the bus. So you gotta keep, keep the bus tours going. I, I genuinely appreciated those as a new commissioner, trying to get oriented to the county as well. And I know you've lived in other areas of the state. How, how does, how does Sioux Falls compare? What are some of the, I mean, I'm sure some of the challenges are the same as some other areas of the state. And, and I know your experience in the state legislature as well, you see some of those challenges from kind of that peer perspective. But, but what, what's something unique or what's something been surprising in the, in the first month on the job?
Oh, good question. You know, I certainly, so I got roots, I was born here, grew up in Rapid, got roots up in Sistin, spent some time in USD, which is rival, I heard of Go Jacks earlier, which was, it's tough, it's tough season for that. But yeah, it's, I mean, this is no joke, one of the best places in the world to live, work and raise a family. And, and we live by that and we show that and we constantly try to protect that, which is why, you know, we can't just grow for growth's sake. And so we're, the perspective that I'm trying to bring with SMGA and getting those people in the room at like an MAB is to our membership advisory board meeting, is to talk about that managed growth. And like I said, meeting those communities where they are. You know, I've had some exposure, the last eight and a half years, I've had the pleasure of working for US Senator Mike Rounds, serving as his regional director in this corner of the state. So a lot of the job duties have overlapped, being able to get out and about and do outreach with our mayors and city councilors and county commissioners and small business owners and you name it, chamber leaders and, and all those folks. I would say one of the biggest surprises so far in the first couple of weeks is I knew some of these communities, I've been able to go visit and tour some of the businesses, being able to continue to do that. We have so many world-class businesses that are right in our backyard that 80, 90% of a population doesn't realize, and big and small. And so being able to go and find those and again, our storytelling aspect, being able to showcase those. You'll see in, with your, one of our marketing partners, the ultimate holiday guide. And I encourage you to check it out. It highlights a lot of holiday activities that are in our metro communities to encourage folks, whether they're living in Sioux Falls or where they may be, to go visit, go check out the local steakhouse in, in Hartford, or go check out different spots, different businesses in these, these towns. It's not that far of a drive. And then vice versa to where, again, the rising tides lift all boats. And so if we can all support each other that way, that's what gets me really excited about this job, but.
Awesome. Looking forward to working with you Tyler, thanks.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Blaumberg?
Not really a question, more of a comment, just to piggyback off what you were describing. I have loved your podcast with the growing places. I think it's a great form of engagement that really helps to promote all of those hidden gems throughout the Sioux Metro area, so.
Thank you. Love to have you on.
Anyone else? Anybody for public comment on this item? All right, thank you. We, we really do appreciate the collaboration you do with the bus tour every year. That has been a great benefit, I think, to the commissioners in particular, just to be able to get out, you know, take that time and get out and see what's going on, so.
Thank you. Yep, we'll, we'll follow up with your team too, usually in May, so second week in May, but we'll be in touch. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, takes us to item 12, Minnehaha Conservation District. Good morning John.
I'm good, thank you.
So thanks everybody for inviting us and opportunity to come and talk to you and see there's new faces again, I think since the last amendment's here, maybe, maybe not, I don't know. I know Jen, but I've known Jen for many years, so. She's our liaison to our board meeting, so. Couple just go through some quick slides and stuff and give you a quick update. If you have any questions at the end, go ahead and there's contact information on the last slide for the general public and people too. So we've been around since 1942. We're a state affiliated association sponsored by the county and the state and the federal and the public and the private. So we're kind of a conglomeration, work with everybody and be in every, everybody's possibility to have, so. And our mission to promote the sustainable use of natural resources through responsible stewardship by providing quality services and education to the surrounding community. And the next few slides will kind of, we'll touch on some of that there, so. Here's a list of our services. These are examples, we're tree planting here. Here we're applying fabric to the trees we'd already planted. Down in the corner there, this is some brush removal out on a CRP field there that had been planted about 10 years ago and had brush encroachment. So we cleaned that up and stuff, so. But even though over the years since 1942, probably most people relate to us as tree planters, but as you can see, the list is not just tree planting anymore. We have broadened out and I've been with the district for 16 years and most of this has all been going on all that time. Couple of things we've added on, but most of it all is there, so. And this is the field, this field here is what it looked like before we started clearing it. This field here is what it looked like after we cleared it. And these there, and here's some more brush trees and stuff that came into the CRP, so that was done through the brush management removal. That's a program you can get into through NRCS with the CRP program and things on that order, so. And here's some more trees that we planted. I think this was a two year, two years ago. And this is what it looked like before they tilled the ground up and got it ready for us to plant and we proceeded into there. So project highlights, we've added an urban coordinator position through a grant through NRCS and that person works with, in conjunction with the city and also with the conservation district in NRCS, promoting farm to table and small farm support and people that aren't registered as farmers, they can get their land registered, they can grow crops and things like that. So we promote the use of high tunnels and things throughout the county. And even in the city limits, we have to work carefully on those because they have to meet the zoning rules and everything, but that's one of the new highlights that we have. We also started a little tree potting irrigation business through the district. Because at the end of every year, we'll have four or 500 trees left over and some of them get given away, bought, sold, but we thought we'd start potting them up. We created a little irrigation system there and have our little timers. And these are some of the trees here going along here. And then they were for replacements that we planted in the spring for people. And then also for people to buy right up till last Thursday, I think. We put them all under plastic to keep ones till spring, so it's other possible. Through our urban position, the city in Alena, Alena is our urban conservationist, created a prairie pollinator garden kit to be distributed through the city of Sioux Falls. Hopefully we can take it to the county wide after this year. We're working on that through a grant with NRCS to see if we can get promotional funds to be able to do that, so. But this year, there was 75 participants and these kits would cost $15 apiece and they made the flowers and the grasses, all stuff native to the area and everything like that, so it was, it was quite popular. And here's a couple of the first year plantings that they did and a couple of pictures that we took. So you can see the results there. And educational outreach, we try to reach as many students and people as we can, both adults and educationalized. And these are the top ones, the Doigivik out there, learning area. That's 100 acres due west of Wall Lake. That's owned by the conservation district and we maintain that. It's open to the public, free of charge. We have walking trail, nature areas, trees and belts and native grasses and everything out there. One thing I was going to bring up that as the year goes, hopefully can bring you some more information because 25 years ago or so, I don't know if all of you guys remember the Wall Lake project. So some of you were around, some weren't. So maybe getting those numbers and getting some pictures and stuff together would get it in front of you guys so that everybody remembers. Or sees it. Sorry about that. Talked my hands out of my mouth and stuff, so. I'll, I'll coordinate with Jen on that if that's okay.
That'd be great.
And then we can figure out a time for that, so. So then in there, we get about, about summer school and I think 4H, the Girl Scouts use it, the Boy Scouts use it, Isaac Walton uses the area. There's 2,500 to 3,000 students that we record that go out there. I don't know how many people actually go in and out on a daily basis, but it's not manned. We just honor system, you're on your own. And it's been very well maintained as far as no destruction or vandalism or anything of that sort, so. Land judging, that's what you can see here. This is a regional contest that we put on with the local FFA chapters. We usually have about 21 schools participate, about 175 kids. And that's put on in the fall. This year we had land from the city of Sioux Falls out on 60th that we used for judging. And then their contest winners go on to the national FFA one, so. And the state speech contest goes on. And these are some of the events that we participate for public outreach and education. I won't read through them. We were at the local foods conference last week. I wasn't, but Elena and one other person was there, so. Then we have the river summit coming up here in December, so. The water festival, that goes on as an educational. We put on our 30th year for the Sioux Empire Water Festival last year. Average about 2,300 kids over two days, fourth graders from surrounding areas. And we get about 45 schools, about 105 to 110 teachers, 75 volunteers and 2,300 and some kids or more every year, so. That's a big one. Goes on for 30 years, hopefully I probably won't be around to see if it works for another 30 or not. And some of the urban education stuff that we're doing here, we worked diligent with the city and acquired a piece of ground from them to do a community garden. We started putting it together this fall. It'll be in place come spring and be used for a public education, plus a place where people can rent spaces to do gardening and stuff, so on there. Here we are laying out some of the plots and stuff. And then we tilted up and got stuff ready this fall. So here's some of the partners that we go through that we work with. Just trying to think. On there's everybody's, we either attend to meetings, they come to our meetings, or we work with them in groups on there. Here's our contact information, website, Facebook, email and our phone number. Any questions?
Questions? Commissioner Karski?
So.
Yeah.
Related to the trees, anybody from the public can come out and buy trees from you?
Yep.
Okay, what type of trees are you typically selling?
We sell everything, most, most of them are bare root, which means they're about eight to 12 inches tall.
What type of tree is it?
And it's anywhere from shrubs, which can constitute red dogwood, lilacs, amber maples, everything on up to burr oaks to Black Hill spruce, ponderosa pine. Anything you're really looking for, we probably can get.
And the prairie pollinator packages, you know, same thing, people can just stop out there, buy those packages?
If they contact the number or the info at Minnehaha CD and just leave their contact, we'll get in touch with them and then they can pick them up. And we've got, we've got a few packets left for this year, but then we're planning to reissue, initiate it for the spring, so they'd be available.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Blaumberg?
Thank you. I was just wondering, does your newsletter go out to people in the city also, or is it just to county?
The city, the newsletter goes out to about 11,000 people in the county. These are good, but they're annoying. It goes out to about 11,000 people in the county. And what we've done is the inner city part of Sioux Falls does not get that. And probably the in towns of all the communities don't because we figure, you know, they, they can access it on our website, so it's still available to everybody else. But due to the cost of postage and the printing, we had to, we have to cut some spots and that seemed to be the ones we thought were less likely to want to obtain the products that we were trying to promote, so.
So the newsletter is available on your website?
But it is, yes.
Okay, it's a great resource.
Yeah, or in the office up at 2408 East Benson. We always have copies there, so.
We had trees planted by John and his crew, probably, I don't know, over a decade ago. And they came out and did just an amazing job, the planting and the, the TARP, what is that called?
Oh, tree fabric.
Yeah, the tree fabric, fabric, really excellent work and really helped us plan what would be best for our properties, so.
Right, yeah, we, yeah, we'll take it from point A to point B, from planting to the types of trees and the cost and, and we can, you can purchase the trees and plant them yourself and we'll make the plan for you, or we'll do it vice versa. You know, things are more expensive, but if you got the time, the people to do it yourself, that's a possibility too, so.
Thank you for what you do.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Commissioner?
John, who's your largest financial contributor to make your budget work?
The whole general public.
The whole general, okay.
You, the county does promote, provide us with, with money on a yearly, yearly budget money, but the, the largest provider is, comes from the list of services that we do and the money. We do get, we obtain some grants through the state or through NRCS or whoever's available and on that. But I would say probably 97% of our money comes from the services that we do and the profit that we make off of that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone for public comment on this item? Well, I would like to say that we bought trees and we planted them ourselves and they were so amazing that we didn't kill them, which we normally do with things like that. And now I have no ladders that are big enough to get to the top of them, so it's, they've been really great. And I'm curious about the community garden. How many plots will you have out there?
Oh, we've, right now we've got 12, we've got 12 demonstrations plots that we're going to have. We have a high tunnel spot that we'll put the high tunnel up for spring, for next year's growing season. And then we have a demo, another demonstration plot of 20 that we're going to grow things in for people to, for educational purposes. And then after that, it's unlimited because with the cities on there, we have, I think it's 12 acres, I think it is, that we can progress over the years to widen it up and make it. And we'll have the, if people are interested and they contact us, we'll have the sizes and the dimensions. So basically, shouldn't say unlimited, but we'd hope to have 25 to 30 after the first
With access to water for?
Have access to water, have access to compost, you have access to being able to put your garbage and stuff in, you know, containers or some type of a trash bin, so everything in there. The biggest, the biggest factor is the location of it is down on, off of 72nd Street there on the north, northeast, northwest side of town, behind Catfish Bay.
Yeah.
People can, it's back in there, so limited access to the point where it's not going to be 24 hours a day, but it'll probably be like seven to eight, seven in the morning to eight at night, you know, and then it has to be shut down. And the police, the county, you guys patrol it and the city patrols it, so there's, there's cover and security there too, so.
All right, well, great. Well, thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item 13, and it looks like we get the pleasure of having Steve Groen up here for a little while. First item, item 13 is considered bid results and award recommendation for MC 20-14, structure 50-272-030 replacement and authorize the chair to sign an agreement with BX Civil Construction. Good morning.
Good morning Commissioner Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. First of all, to answer Dean's question about item eight, the old Impala will be our new pilot car for the flagging operations. It has really It has a really tight turning radius. So, in this case, this is a structure southeast of Dell Rapids that was one of the bridges that we got big funding for last year. We opened bids on November eighth. We received four, and we were very pleased with the bid results. We're recommending that the commission approve the contract to BX Civil and Construction at the price of four-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand, seventy-two dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Any public comment on this item? All right. Any questions for the commission or Steve? If not, it entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Commissioner Kipley.
Did we need a particular motion there in context of the Department of Transportation? Here, I'll let my colleague.
Shaking his head no, so.
I believe you just need to award this contract to BX Civil and recovered. There'll be additional paperwork to do with the South Dakota DOT after this contract is awarded.
Looking to staff, are we, we're all good with that form of motion? Okay. Thank you.
All right. So, now we had a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right. It takes us to item fourteen, which is to consider bid results and award recommendation for MC seventeen dash ten Highway one forty-nine grading, and authorize the chair to sign an agreement with Rungie Enterprises. Steve.
Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. Also, on November eighth, we opened bids for MC seventeen-ten, which is the second of three phases for the reconstruction of the Colton Road, Highway one forty-nine, heading south from Colton. Once again, we were pleasantly, we were pleased with the bid results. We did follow, there was quite a gap between the first and second bidder and our engineering estimates. We did verify with Rungie that everything is acceptable. We're looking for the commission to award Rungie Enterprises this project at the contract price of one million, seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents.
All right. Any public comment on this item? Any questions by the commission? Commissioner Karski.
I just noticed, Steve, both of these came in lower than the engineer's estimate. You seeing a turn on pricing?
It's pretty early to tell. I believe the DOT is opening some contracts tomorrow, so it'll be interesting to see where that is. We have another structure bid opening next week. We're hoping this.
Trend continues?
Yes, in this case, Rungie, it sounds like they were able to get borrow for this project real close to the site, which helped their pricing. BX asked if they could do the work for their project this winter because it's real close to their shop, and they like to keep their crews working for the winter, and so I believe both of those factored into each of those projects.
Good to know.
Any other questions? All right. If not, it entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to item fifteen, which is to authorize the highway department to purchase a twenty-twenty-four Ford F-50 under the State of South Dakota procurement contract number one-seven-six-one-six. Steve.
Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. This is a piece of equipment that we had in our twenty-four budget. It's really been difficult to get vehicles, as you all know. Last Monday, Boyer Ford called, who's the contract holder for these vehicles for the state of South Dakota, and they notified me that Ford was closing the window on these orders last Thursday. So, we went over and got an order in pending a purchase order approval from the commission. I did talk to Susan Beeman in the auditor's office. This will just encumber the funds, but the funds will be from next year's budget. We won't pay for this vehicle until it shows up in about three months. We're looking for your approval to execute the PO, to get this process going, to get this Ford F-550 into our system.
Anyone for public comment on this item? Any questions by the commission? Seems like this has been a trend recently where it's getting harder to get vehicles and that we need to get a little ahead of it. If there aren't any questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move approval.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item sixteen is to authorize the chairperson to sign the agreement with KLJ Inc. for design of MC twenty-three dash twelve gravel pit building. Steve.
Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. This is our storage building for vehicles and equipment out at the gravel pit, and during the DRAE show back in May of twenty-twenty-one, our building was destroyed. We did file a claim with FEMA, and between FEMA and the state of South Dakota, we were awarded one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars to replace that building. We were working with the state's attorney's office on the best way to proceed with getting a new pole barn built out there, and the state's attorney's office said we needed to hire a design professional for the design and construction of the new building. We did talk to a few firms. KLJ is able to do this work, and they also gave us the best price for their services, so we're asking your permission to proceed with the contract with KLJ Inc. to proceed with the design so we can get this project bid.
All right. Any public comment on this item? Any comments or questions by the commission? Commissioner Karski.
Can we get one built for one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand?
Yes, in this case, there's, it's just a building and overhead doors with a dirt floor and limited utilities. We've talked to a few steel building suppliers before we proceeded with this.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Would make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I want to thank you, Steve, because I think you spearheaded getting, applying to FEMA for the funds for that, so that was well done and appreciated. Takes us to item seventeen, authorize the chairperson to sign the agreement with KLJ Inc. for the design of MC twenty-three seventeen highway facility phase two.
Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. When we were meeting with KLJ on the gravel building, we have talked with the commission in the past about the possibility of looking into doing a phase-two building at the site of the old highway facility. Earlier this year, you approved a site survey contract with IDG Inc. that work is complete. This would be just to take that site survey, come up with a design for commission's consideration in the future to decide if we would want to proceed with phase two or not. This is getting to the point, this will get us up to that point where we could come back to the commission early in twenty-twenty-four to see if it's something the commission is interested in having highway continue farther discussions with that phase-two building.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item? All right. Any comments or questions from the commission on this item? No, we have had an opportunity in Building Committee to visit about this, so if there aren't any comments or questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. This takes us to item eighteen, which is a briefing on the medical cannabis dispensary applications. We'll give Kim a second to get to the mic.
Morning, Commissioners. Kim Christiansen of the Auditor's Office. In September of this year, we determined the availability of one medical cannabis license pursuant to ordinance MC sixty dash twenty-one in ordinance establishing the licensing regulation of medical cannabis dispensaries in Minnehaha County. The Auditor's Office set the timeline for accepting the applications for the license from October tenth to November thirteenth at five PM. During that time, we received one application for a medical cannabis license. Due to the availability of one license and the receipt of one application, we determined we did not need to have the random selection. The ordinance is allowing for a sixty-day review period to determine if the application meets the requirements of the ordinance. Once that review is complete, we will hand forward the application for your consideration. The sixty-day review period would end as late as December or January sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Kim? Commissioner Karski.
Couple of questions. Little bit more about the review process, and when is the applicant made public, or is that public already?
It is, the application was received from Shangri-La, South Dakota.
I'm sorry?
Shangri-La. So, they were actually one of, testing my memory here, they were one of the ones we received when we did the initial random selection back in twenty-twenty-one.
Okay. So, the review process, is that like through the sheriff, through?
Yep.
The Department of Health or whatever?
The sheriff, planning and zoning, state's attorney, and then I have also reviewed the application.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Comments? Any public comment on this item? All right. Thank you very much, Kim. That takes us to item nineteen, which is to authorize the chair to sign the CCOG Metropolitan Planning Organization Agreement for twenty-twenty-four. Tyler.
Good morning, Tyler Clark, Commission Office. For your consideration is the agreement with CCOG for the Metropolitan Planning Organization Unified Work Program. I'm actually going to take, this is an annual agreement that we have with CCOG. CCOG serves as sort of the pass-through for federal funding from the federal highway and transportation programs, and this money is allocated towards a variety of work that is laid out in the work plan, which is included in the packet. We're slated for one-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand, five-hundred dollars from this, a portion of that is for personnel and the rest is for the scheduled work. And again, for your consideration is to request the chair to sign the agreement.
All right. Any questions for Tyler? Any public comment on this item? Turn it over to the commission for discussion or for a motion.
I would make a motion to sign the CCOG Metropolitan Planning Organization Agreement.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to item twenty, which is to authorize the chair to sign a settlement agreement and release of claims between DakotaTons for Health and Minnehaha County. Tom, good morning.
Okay. Good morning. Tom Greco, Commission Administrative Officer. So, the action that's being requested this morning is to authorize the chair to sign a settlement agreement, specifically what Commissioner Chair Bender noted. It's a settlement agreement and release of claims between DakotaTons for Health and Minnehaha County. So, as you may recall, Minnehaha County adopted a limited public use policy on May second, twenty-twenty-three. Subsequent litigation was brought against the county by DakotaTons for Health. Subsequently, a restraining order was issued by the court preventing the county from enforcing certain provisions of the policy. Since the issuance of that order, those provisions that were identified were not enforced by the county. The proposed settlement agreement, which is included in your packet, has been drafted by both parties, Minnehaha County and DakotaTons for Health, that would resolve all aspects of the pending litigation, other than attorney fees and costs. Specifically, and I'll cover it in the next item, talking about the revised limited use policy. Among the key elements that were restrained in terms of enforcing were a provision to require a check-in and also the provision providing for designated areas to collect signatures or conduct certain activity. Just for your awareness, this particular agreement that's before you has already been signed by DakotaTons for Health. Subject to your questions, that's all I have.
All right. Anyone for public comment on this item today? All right. I'll turn it over to the commission for questions, discussion, or a motion.
Move to authorize the chair to sign the settlement agreement.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to item twenty-one, which is obviously related, informational briefing on the revised limited use policy.
Okay. Tom Greco again. As Chair Bender noted, this is an informational briefing only. I'll be back before you again next week to present this policy for consideration and adoption by the commission. As you can see on the memorandum up here, it's important to note, and this takes some of the language from the revised limited use policy, it's important to note that our buildings here do exist to accommodate the business of government for many folks throughout the county. We certainly appreciate citizens who take an active role in government decisions at all levels, but we do want to ensure that the buildings are able to accommodate people every day without any unnecessary delay or convenience. Following a legal challenge that I described in the previous item, portions of our current limited use policy were enjoined by the court and, again, have not been enforced since the court's order. So, upon review of the court's order and understanding the necessity to provide reasonable access to the Minnehaha County Administration Building, the building that we're in right now, we wanted to ensure people with mobility disabilities would still have access. We went about the process of revising our limited use policy. What this revised limited use policy, that's before you today, again, just for informational purposes, it eliminates the previous designated areas that were outlined in the policy, and it also creates a non-interference zone, which includes the handicap accessible curb, and I'll show this in a moment, at the west entrance of the administration building. So, this proposed revised limited use policy is the policy referenced in the settlement agreement that was before you in the previous item. So, I would certainly encourage your approval at the next meeting of this policy, but I do want to show you the policy, run through some of the key elements upfront. As we see up here, the first paragraph really does, first and second paragraphs really do affirm our commitment to ensuring the ability of folks to exercise certain political activities, but also ensure that folks have access to the building. One of the primary differences between this policy and the one that it will be replacing is the fact that we, instead of having designated areas, we now have a, what we're calling a zone of non-interference. This is an actual, a verbal description of the zone of non-interference, but I will just scroll down to the end here to show you a pictorial representation of it. This area that's identified in yellow, this is the ramp area that was mentioned previously, all the way up to the main doors going into the west entrance of the administration building. This is what's being referred to as the zone of non-interference. So, to talk just a little bit about what that means, we've identified and designate within this policy utilizers, and those utilizers are people who are conducting certain political activities, which is defined in the policy itself. Utilizers, we do continue to require that they remain outside of the county buildings when conducting any political activity, and that goes for every single county building. Parts of this particular policy do focus specifically on this building here. Utilizers may approach individuals for the purposes of asking them to sign a petition, provided the utilizers remain outside of the zone of non-interference and follow all other provisions of the policy that we're discussing today. So, the idea is to keep that zone of non-interference clear and free. Utilizers shall not at any time prevent access to county buildings or obstruct vehicular or pedestrian traffic within the parking lots, parking areas, or as individuals enter or leave county buildings. So, again, maintaining that access to the county buildings. We do ask that utilizers conduct themselves in a polite, courteous, and professional manner, including but not limited to respecting an individual's right to decline to sign, right to decline to sign a petition. We also have identified that they must respect the rights of others. I just mentioned that, I'm sorry. We ask that they not follow individuals into any building, the zone of non-interference, the zone of non-interference or other area of the campus where political activity is prohibited. We ask that utilizers not place any material in the zone of non-interference, so, again, keeping that zone of non-interference clear, without, including but without limitation certain items such as petitions, signs, banners, pamphlets, tables, and chairs. We do want folks to understand that if such material is left unattended, it would be dealt with appropriately and placed in a receptacle. appropriately and, and, uh, placed in a receptacle. Um, we do recognize that the weather gets rough and we, we certainly, um, would not prohibit folks from coming inside of the building, uh, as long as they are not conducting defined political activity within the confines of the building. And also, uh, just to note that the County Administration Building does serve as a polling place, uh, particularly during absentee voting, accounting center, uh, on election days. Uh, so, um, there would be a prohibition on, on certain activities on the grounds, uh, during those time periods. Uh, the point of contact, any questions for this particular, uh, policy, the revised policy would be directed to the commission office, so up here on the third floor. Uh, subject to your questions, that's all I have.
All right, anyone here for public comment on this item? All right, I turn it over to the commission. Any questions? Comments? This policy is a result of a lot of hard work, so we appreciate the work that you and, and Tyler and the team have put on at State's Attorney. And so, if there aren't any other questions, that was just a briefing. We'll have an opportunity to discuss this again next meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so this takes us to new item twenty-two, which is when we, um, removed that bill from the bill. So right now, what I'd be looking for is an a motion to reduce the payment to the Cheddar and Adams Law Firm by six thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and eighty-one cents. Um, I believe the auditor, oh, there she is, sorry, I thought, I saw you earlier. Um, anything that you wanna add to that?
No, not necessarily. Um, the item is just, um, uh, we've discovered in the auditor's office that the item should probably be paid by Brown County, and so that's why we're removing it. So I don't know if there's questions or anything else.
Can we send any other bills to Brown County?
Well, that might be good. We'll try our best.
All right, any other questions, comments? Any public comment on this item? All right, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kerski?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. All right, this takes us to our opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here today who'd like to speak about something that was not on the agenda today, this is your opportunity. Right, not seeing anyone. Um, Commissioner Liaison Reports, are there any liaison reports today? Commissioner Karski.
In addition to my liaison report on the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance, um, I, last Monday was also in Pierre for the whole day, um, for the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners. Um, we had a legislative meeting, I guess, um, we'll have another board meeting next month, but, um, it was attended, very well attended by the county commissioners that represent the board, but also Senators Malhoff and Dybert from South Dakota Senate and Representatives Chase and Mortenson. So it was very, um, long and ongoing discussion about the legislative priorities, um, that the South Dakota Legislative Summer Study brought and kinda where, you know, we, or, or how as an association, where we should stand on support or maybe not support of some of these. So, it'll be ongoing, but it's, it was a very, it was a good meeting, lasted about six hours.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Oh, and if I may?
Yes.
Um, as past president of that association, I am not a voting member, but Minnehaha County has, is it, we should have a voting member on that board, so I've asked, um, our administrative office to prepare a resolution that'll be forthcoming that I'd be looking for support to be that voting member since I'm attending member, meetings anyway, so that'll be forthcoming.
Thank you. Anyone else this morning? Commissioner Blainberg?
Um, last night, we had the opportunity to meet with the Minnehaha County towns and townships, um, out at the highway building, and there was a great turnout as usual, um, good conversation. Um, Tom Greco was there to give an update from the county, and then our hosts, um, Jacob and Steve both gave updates on the road projects that we've been working on and what's coming up. Um, so that was a really good meeting. Also, I think we all, or, uh, Commissioner Karski and I were at the Development Foundation, Sioux Falls Development Foundation meeting, and Commissioner Kipley was there, um, just to learn more about the work that they have done in the last year and what they have coming up and to see, um, just what's on the agenda for them. And then we also met with, um, the Second Circuit Court legislators. They had, they hosted the legislative coffee for legislators and commissioners from Lincoln and Minnehaha County. And I just thought my takeaway from that was very interesting, how much our courts make do, um, as our population continues to grow, so. All good.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, any non-action commission discussion?
Madam Chair, I'll just wish everyone a, a happy Thanksgiving, uh, coming up, and I'll just note that, uh, when my youngest came home from preschool the other day, she had a, uh, craft that she made for Thanksgiving, a turkey that listed out what she was thankful for, and she was thankful for her mom and her sister. So I, I got left out. But, uh, so I'll, so I'll be working on that over Thanksgiving meal on Thursday, but, uh, otherwise, I, I wish you all a, a happy Thanksgiving. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much. All right, so there is an executive session immediately following the commission meeting for purposes of SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two, one, three, four, and six. I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. So we're now going into executive session in the training room next door. Uh, we will begin that executive session at ten forty-five. All right, thank you, everyone.